Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Ms. Edwards?
Here.
Ms. Nywer?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
Are you along your toes now, because we did that backwards.
That's okay.[24.42][24.42](laughter)[25.42][25.42](audience laughing)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's my going away present.
Playboh.[45.82][45.82](laughter)
Okay, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Thomas.
Okay, special guest recognition. We're gonna go out of order a little bit and turn the program over to Colonel King to recognize the Fort Sill Excellence in Education Award for 2019.
Thank you very much. Well, I consider it an honor. It's been quite a while since I've been up here at the podium, so anybody that knows me, you could be here quite a while.[76.12][76.12](laughter) But hey, today's-
Today's a great day. Fort Sill team, Oklahoma, excellent pride education winners. We get an opportunity to recognize some people that did some great work. Basically, we looked at three categories: administration, education, and staff support. And out of this, a total of nine nominations were evaluated by a panel of judges, and the following honorees were selected from Lawton Public Schools. So, when I announce it, I want to hear a loud and thunderous "Hooray!"[111.32][111.32](laughter) Okay, for Outstanding Educator, Ms. Kimberly Jones, science teacher.[117.12][117.12](applause) Come on up.[121.12][121.12](applause) For those of you that have the bios on the tables, definitely look, read the bios, because if not, I'll be here all day trying to read.[133.02][133.02](laughter) Let's get a good angle for him. Come on, let's get a good angle.[138.12][138.12](laughter) Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Great job. Oh, we got another one, hold on.
Thank you.
We'll do it like this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And that's a lot of good stuff right there. And then the next individual that we have out of the three, we got two. The outstanding support personnel member is Ms. Joanne Gasbeck.[169.32][169.32](applause) Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly, because I don't want to get in trouble.
You did, thank you.
Well, first of all, congratulations for all your hard work.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, let's get this right here.
Thank you.
We're gonna face this camera so we can get this memorialized.
Thank you very much.[195.62][195.62](applause)
So, because we think everybody has done a pretty good job here, as I would say it a different way, but my team is here, and they would tell on me if I said it the way I would say it.[214.92][214.92](laughter) Daryl, Shara, Sarah. What we're gonna do is, we're also gonna recognize those nine individuals that were nominated. So, the first one I have is Ms. Mary Leach from Hugh Bishe Elementary.[230.72][230.72](applause) You just give me the name, and I'll call it.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, how are ya?[242.82][242.82](laughter)
I guess I'm watching best.
Well, I can hold a conversation for a second.[249.12][249.12](laughter) So, how are you doing? Well, please, come up here, and let's get a photo.
Thank you.
And congratulations for being selected for nominating for it.
Where do I go to back down?
Yes. Next one I have is Dr. Jenny Hanna. Please come forward.[269.12][269.12](applause) Oh, wow, snuck up on me.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next one I have is Ms. Janet Hamilton.[286.12][286.12](applause) Congratulations on your nomination. Hold on, we got a picture back here. Thank you. Next up, we have is Ms. Krista Bear.[307.12][307.12](applause)
Oh, we can wait.
Oh, I'd make them wait. Congratulations. The next one we have is Ms. Shereen Williams.[323.62][323.62](applause) Congratulations on your nomination. Let's get our camera guy here. And our final nominee was Mr. David Hornbeck.[351.12][351.12](applause)
Where is Chief?
Chief's usually here.[358.32][358.32](laughter)
Hey, that makes me a little paranoid, because he's usually standing right there.[364.12][364.12](laughter) So, what we'll do is, at the next meeting, if we can, or if we see him before then, we'll give it to him. But, once again, great job to everybody, to the winners. Congratulations to the nominees. Congratulations on your nomination. Obviously, the community and the schools that you work at think very highly of you, especially your counterparts. So, congratulations once again. Thank you.
Thank you.[392.92][392.92](applause)
For all of you that are tempted to sneak out quietly, I would ask that you stay for one more recognition, and that is Kent Jester, who has been board member for Lawton Public Schools for 10 years.
Do I get to do this?
You get to do it.
Oh, all right.
I didn't practice as Kent, so I'll work with him.
Just go with it, friends.
He didn't practice at all. I'm very honored, though, to get to be the one that gives it to you. Okay, I'll come back, we'll get that. All right, Kent has been a member of the school board for 10 years now, and the last board member that was on the board when I started. He's been a great mentor, but I'm missing, I'm not gonna cry about this. And we are gonna miss you. Thank you for your service. Us as a board has also got something for you, and we want to give you. Thank you so much, Kent.
Wow, thank you.
We expect you to not have to come and visit occasionally.
And you need to read that for us.
I will read this. "The true meaning of life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to set." Very nice. Wow.[474.12][474.12](applause)
Come on, say a few words.
I was hoping I wouldn't have to say anything, because I had to give a speech this morning, and I'm pretty well speech-ed out, so.[502.12][502.12](laughter) I do want to say just a couple of quick things. I just want you to know that this has probably been one of the most difficult things I've ever done as far as service to the community, but by far and away the most rewarding. I mean, every, a bit of time spent doing this has been more than worth it. I mean, what we do is for the kids and for the community, and I can't think of another way to do this better. When I first decided I was going to file for office, I had the preconceived notion, oh, there he is.[541.72][541.72](laughter) I was needing your protection.
Making an entrance.
I had the preconceived notion that Lawton Public Schools had the greatest teachers, administrators, staff personnel in the world, and 10 years later, I had no idea just how fabulous this whole district is. It's filled with the best people, with the best reason for serving, and it's, you know, the job you do is marvelous. The other thing is board members. I mean, all the board members I've served with, you know, are doing it for the right reason. They do it because they love the kids, they care about the future, and they care about this community. So, it's gonna be hard not being here, but my wife has told me that we'll probably stay married.[592.72][592.72](laughter) Thank you all.[595.62][595.62](applause)
Colonel King, do you want to go ahead and go?
I was gonna say, I'll take one more opportunity.[607.12][607.12](laughter) I think I've got, got it kind of in motion now. But as we were speaking earlier, we were recognizing the nominees for the Team Sill Oklahoma Pride Excellence in Education. And we had the three categories, and we've identified who the winners were, but what we also wanted to do is recognize the nominees. And one of the nominees that we did not get to congratulate is Chief for Mr. David Hornbeck. Come on up.[643.82][643.82](applause)
Okay.
A picture of the board?
Yes. Mitch.
Where do you want it?
Back here.
Four plus, I mean, I'll be the plus.
Turn it towards you.[678.12][678.12](laughter)
Yep. I've had too much medicine, so the kind of-
It weren't okay.
Out of me now?
You'd be good.
It's gonna be messed.
If you don't cut the cake, you're always gonna-
I'm having a little brain, so I could jack in the motorola this time.
Oh, cool. No, that's it. Oh, no.
You can, yeah, Kelly can.
Oh, no, shut the door. I'm gonna die if he shuts the door. I guess we need to, because we came here with open.
Thank you. Agenda item five is Architect and Construction Manager's Report, so at this point, I would invite Corey Miller from AIP to give us an architectural report.
So, since we toured about five minutes ago, a lot has happened. We definitely appreciate the opportunity for the board to come and take a look at what we've been working on, and it's always great to show it off, so thank you guys very much. Just to run through a quick update on the other projects we're working on. Over at the Food Service Warehouse, they finished the underslab piping. They're working on backfilling and the recess slab under that freezer now, and they've been relocating the door that was in the way. At MacArthur High School, the HVAC project, they're continuing to work in the auditorium, finishing the ductwork up for the stage, so they can turn that back over. And they'll be finishing up the work for the house HVAC that takes place on the roof in the penthouse over the next few weeks. For the gym, we opened up bids on the 13th of February, and I believe we have an agenda item for accepting bids on that tonight. And we do recommend the low bid from Cavens Construction Group. On Central Middle School, the HVAC repair, we had a pre-bid conference on February 28th. We've got a lot of interest this time around, so we think things are gonna be nice and competitive. We did take the opportunity to address a lot of the bidders' questions and try to provide as much clarification as we could on the control sequencing. And we're gonna postpone that bid for a couple of weeks, open it after spring break on the 26th. The Cameron Stadium Turf, we opened up bids on February 13th, and we are recommending that we reject all the bids at this point. We did have a lot of participation, but one of the things that we included in the project was a drainage mat, just based on the existing drawings, but we later determined that that was never installed. And so, we considered, you know, a change order to just remove that component, but it's gonna exceed the statutory limits on change orders. It's such a valuable item that we recommend just go ahead and rebidding it at this time. We're gonna have another pre-bid conference on Thursday this week, and we'll open up bids the second time on the 26th. The Douglas Learning Center Window Project, we met on the 27th with the districts to review the plans, discuss that the addition of the rescue windows from the classrooms is gonna increase the costs somewhat, and so we're gonna take the opportunity to look at the cost of the HVAC work that needs to be done, some sequencing, some ways to overlap some of that, and so we're gonna look at the schedule and kind of regroup on that project. For the four re-roofs that we're doing, the MacArthur High Gym, foyer, and locker room, Pat Henry, Woodland Hills, and the Food Service Warehouse, we also reviewed those on the 27th. We talked to the city since, and they are gonna require that the skylights at Pat and Henry be updated to receive fall protection. Basically, we're gonna put in new skylights that have a polycarbonate lens, so no one falls through them. But that is gonna extend our bid schedule by a couple of weeks, and we're looking at the 19th to advertise those, probably the 26th, since I think the school will be out that week. Ron Stevens Stadium, we did receive the Geotech report back, and we're still waiting on the survey. That should be done any day now, and then we'll set a schedule on that one. The Lawton High Gym Auditorium HVAC and the Tomlinson Gym HVAC, we reviewed those on the 27th, and we're proposing a bid date for the 26th on those. We're also looking at a couple of new projects over at MacArthur Middle School to fix the drainage for the main drop-off loop, and also a secure entry vestibule there.
What was the second part?
A secure entry vestibule.
The vestibule.
That way, you have to go through the reception-
Yep.
-after you get through those main doors.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, it's a pleasure having you.
You're doing a great job.
It's great to hear Ron Stevens Stadium.
Yes. The Kent Jester Memorial Project?[978.42][978.42](laughter)
No, 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 that's gonna get out now.[980.42][980.42](laughter)
So, following the tour, do you guys have any questions on the Eisenhower Middle School?
Looks great.
Did Dad really need me?
Thank you.
Looks great.
So, the only other, the project would be the Whittier, and so we got that one done. We have some tweaking, some minor corrections that we're gonna do during spring break, put some more gravel down, and maybe spruce it up a little bit better. After that, we'll be done with Whittier, so. No luck for the questions, all we got.
Looking great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Agenda item six takes us to departmental reports. In 6A, we have provided you with written reports from business operations and educational services, and at this time, I would ask if you have any questions on those reports?
No.
All right.
We're good.
6B, I will turn it over to Mr. Gibbs for an audit report.
Good evening. My name is Lance Gibbs. I'm the comptroller for the district, and obviously, each year, the school is audited. This year, our auditor is Mr. Eric Bledsoe. His firm completed the audit, and he will present for us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My first time in front of you guys, because this is the first year that we've done your audit report. Tell you a little bit about our firm. We're located in Broken Arrow. We're the largest school auditing firm in the state. We do about 130 schools. Around here, we do Elgin, India Homa, Sterling, Bishop, Marlowe, Anadarko, so we're pretty familiar with this area, and we do, basically, all over the state, we do audit reports. And so what I'm gonna do is just go over the letters and a few financials, and then I'll take any questions from you. I'm gonna start over on page one. Hopefully, you all have your audit copies with you. Page one through three is the independent auditor's report, and any time a CPA firm does an audit, whether it be a mom-and-pop operation, all the way up to a huge Fortune 500 company, you always have to issue an independent auditor's report. That's probably, that's the most important document in an audit report, because it's where you state your opinion on the financial statements. It's where you say if everything was presented fairly and accurately and materially correct. So, that's what we do. This report used to be, when I first started in auditing, it was three paragraphs long. Now, it's three pages long. So, it shows you what happened when government gets involved. But page two talks about an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles. What that's talking about when it says adverse is that Oklahoma public schools are asked by the State Department of Education to use a regulatory basis of accounting, and it's basically, you know, using almost like a fund-type accounting, and almost, to a point, it's almost cash basis where, you know, you don't recognize revenue till you actually receive it and that kind of thing. But you all comply with that in the way that you present it, because you're complying with your regulatory agency, which is the State Department. You're also, we had an unmodified opinion on this regulatory basis, because you added capital assets back. You didn't have capital assets last year, so that was a mark on this letter. But this year, you were able to get that capital asset information and put it on the reports. That's great. So, the only thing on here is the adverse opinion for the regulatory style, which is kind of out of your hands, actually. After that, on page four, is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this says unaudited, and that's because this is a report that the district itself prepares. And I've been involved in doing these reports for several years, and I'll tell you, they did it all on their own. This is a report that the client is supposed to do, and we're supposed to review it, make sure it looks accurate, and just put it in here. We have a lot of clients that say, you know, what should I do here? What should I do here? And we kind of have to lead them through it, but they did it all on their own, and we don't, we haven't had too many clients that have been able to do that and been able to provide the information that they did here. This is kind of the school's chance to say where they have been and where they're headed, and it's a good report for that kind of thing, so it's a good read, if you have time to get to that. After that, we get into some financial statements. Page 14 and 15 are almost where you take all the funds and mash them together. Kind of hard to get a lot of a read off of this, off of a financial statement like this, because it's so big, and it's kind of throwing everything together, and you know, if you have bond issues, or you don't have bond issues, it can affect the bottom line on this, but that's the purpose and intent behind 14 and 15 are to kind of mash the funds all together. Then on page 16, you actually get into the actual funds and where they were on an individual basis, but I'm gonna take you past those, and I'm gonna take you past the notes over to page 34. You probably don't want to sit here and have me read numbers and notes to you, so. Page 34, what we do there is we show the budgeted amounts, and then we show the actual amounts for the fiscal year. And then we also, one thing we always like to put on our reports is prior-year information. We don't think financial statements are worth anything unless you have something to compare them to. So, we always try to have prior-year information on ours, and on page 34, you can see what happened to the general fund in 1819. If you look at that actual amounts, you had $120 million of revenue collected. You can look at the prior year, you were at $110 million, so you collected more than you did the prior year, which is always good. Expenditures, you had $124 million. The year before that, you were at $109, so like everything in life, everything's more expensive every year. Your expenses are gonna continue to go up. And also, you know, we had the large salary increases and that kind of thing, so that affects it also. But bottom line, for the 1819 fiscal year, your expenditures exceeded your revenue by about $3.4 million. The goal of a government is always to live on that year's collections. You know, the federal government hadn't done it in a long time. The state government, every once in a while, they can hit it good and do it, and it trickles all the way down to the local governments, because when the state government has trouble on their end, they'll take a little bit of your money, you know, midterm or something. So, it does affect everybody if you can't live on your year's collections. The year before, you did great, you came out $1.1 million ahead. This year, you had to dip into your fund balance a little bit, but your fund balance went from $18,900,000 down to $14,536,000, which is still a very healthy fund balance for a district your size. You look at fund balance, and you take it as a percentage of revenues collected, and you're at 12% carryover, which is nice. That's a good fund balance for your size district. As an audit firm, we don't tell you where you should be fund balance-wise. That's up to you all as a local board. We just say, please have something there, because there's, you know, I look like I'm in my mid-20s, but I've actually been through this cycle a few times, and I know that it's just, it's just a big cycle. It goes really well, and then it gets really lean, and that carryover, it's what's there to save you on those lean years. The next page, page 35, is your building fund. Third column over, again, actual, you brought in $2.4 million. You spent $3.7 million, and so you, once again, you had to eat into your fund balance in the building fund, so it went down from $2 million down to $639,000. You know, building fund, you're not gonna be able to build up a huge balance there. You're not gonna be able to build a lot of things these days with the little bit of property tax money you get in building funds. So, if you can do repairs and maintenance, a couple of salaries, that's about all you're gonna get out of a building fund. After that, a couple of more, the municipal tax funds, and then we got the bond funds on page 37, which of course are always, depending on how many bonds you pass that year, you can see in the prior year on page 37, you had bond sale proceeds of $61 million, and so in the actual, in the current years where you started spending that money, so you're, it kind of affects it in that way. After that's a couple more schedules, I'm gonna take you over to page 43. Page 43 through 45 are your student activity funds broke out by subaccount for the entire year. Bottom line on that, on page 45, you began the year with $1,901,000. You had additions, which is your revenue, your fundraisers, $2,734,000, and you had deletions, which is expenses. I don't know why they can't call them revenue expenses. You had deletions of $2,707,000, so you ended the year with $1,928,000. What's, one thing you want to look at on this at the end of a year is, are your additions and deletions fairly close to each other? They should be, because those sponsors should be bringing that money in and then spending it on that year's kids, that year's organizations. We usually say they should be within 10%, 15% of each other. Yours are almost spot-on equal, so that tells you that your sponsors are doing a good job out there, raising that money and using it on that year's kids. Page 46 and 47 is a horizontal schedule. That's your federal award schedule. Shows all your federal programs, how much was awarded in each one of those programs, how much was received, and how much was expended on each of those programs. Bottom line, you had federal grant receipts of $21.7 million federal, and then federal grant expenditures of $27 million, and the reason those two are different is usually just a timing deal on getting those final claims in by the end of the year. After that, on page 48 and 49 is another letter. The first letter we talked about was the independent auditor's report, which every audit has to have. This letter on page 48 is your, basically, your second level, which is your government auditing standards. Anytime you do an audit of a government, you have to issue a separate letter on compliance and on internal controls, and that's what we do on page 48 and 49. On internal controls and compliance, we had one small comment that we put in here, a finding that we'll go over in just a moment, but we only had one. And then on page 50 and 51 is a letter that looks a lot like the one we just looked at, but this is your third level of letters, and it's considered your uniform guidance, your federal level. The federal people want to know their own report on internal controls and compliance to make sure everything was done accurately and fairly there. And once again, on this one, we had no findings on the, on your federal programs, all the federal programs. You know, they basically use the same internal control as your other monies, but we didn't have anything on any federal program that needed to go on here. Page 52 is a kind of a summary schedule of findings and responses. One thing I'll point out there, about two-thirds of the way down, we talk about identification of major programs, Child Nutrition Fund and Impact Aid. Those were the two federal programs that we tested compliance on. We look at every federal program, but we have to go in-depth on the larger ones and make sure that they are being done accurately, and so those are the two that we did this past year. Page 53 is where we have that finding that I- But this is your third level of letters, and it's considered your uniform guidance, your federal level. The federal people want to know their own report on internal controls and compliance to make sure everything was done accurately and fairly there. And once again, on this one, we had no findings on the, on your federal programs, all the federal programs. You know, they basically use the same internal control as your other monies, but we didn't have anything on any federal program that needed to go on here. Page fifty-two is a, kind of a summary schedule of findings and responses. One thing I'll point out there, about two-thirds of the way down, we talk about identification of major programs, child nutrition fund and impact aid. Those were the two federal programs that we tested compliance on. We look at every federal program, but we have to go in-depth on the larger ones and make sure that they are being done accurately. And so those are the two that we did this past year. Page fifty-three is where we have that finding that I mentioned a moment ago. It was on financial reporting. Probably not a big news item to you all to know that at the end of last year, you had a little bit of trouble with your financial records and accounting software and all that. We, you know, had to make a comment about that because it slowed the process down a little bit, you know. When we came in to do the estimate needs, we had a lot of struggle to get that information, to make sure that we felt it was accurate enough to put in a format that we felt good with. And then your OCAS data has to be submitted in a timely manner, and that was a little bit late also. But like we said here in the district response, that's all been taken care of. And I'll tell you one thing right now, that was taken care of. Because when we came back to do the final audit work, it was a totally different dynamic that we got here. I mean, everything was completely accurate, up to date. Going back a couple of years, I mean, every month had been redone and was reconciling to the penny, and I mean, no problems at all. So I don't think this is going to be an issue for you all going forward. After that, on page fifty-four and fifty-five are the items that were on the prior year audit and how they were addressed. I can tell you, every item on here was either completely resolved, or if it wasn't resolved in the eighteen nineteen year that we looked at, then we looked at this year and made sure that it had been resolved in nineteen twenty, the current year. And they all had. They had all either been corrected right away, or they've been corrected since. So everything looked really good there. And that's, and then I had, there's a couple of other miscellaneous pages there. But basically, that's my report. This is the part of the presentation where the new auditor normally trashes the old auditor. But I can't do that in good conscience because Mary Johnson's firm, who you all are considering to do your audit next year, is a very, very good firm, very well-respected, accurate and thorough in their job. So, you know, it's obvious that she's done a lot of good work here for you all in the past. So another thing I want to say is, you know, we do a lot of big school audits, and a lot of times we go in begrudgingly because we get a lot of the, first, they don't like us because we're the new auditors. But then, you know, we get a lot of, that's not my job, I don't know, I just do this. You know, don't get a lot of helpful, you know, help when we're out there trying to figure out who does what and where we need to go. We didn't get that at all here. Everybody was really, really helpful in the business office, took care of us, you know, the payroll, federal programs. Everybody was very helpful. Anything we asked them for, they got it for us right away, so we weren't waiting around to get the work done. We really appreciated that. You know, everything, cooperation was just great all the way through. And, you know, Lance Gibbs, of course, and Diane Branstadter, they really helped us out a lot and got us everything we needed. And really, for a large school audit, this went extremely well for a first-year audit. We don't expect them to go that well. And it really did go better than I expected. So I really appreciated all their hard work. But that's my report. I'll be glad to take any questions if you've got any.
Great news.
It is, it's amazing news.
We just need to thank Lance and his team, oh my gosh.
Yeah. You can tell a lot of people did a lot of work, so we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you for your work.
I can't not say, I mean, obviously, the team had a lot to do with it, but I can't not thank Mary for being available. But Diane Branstadter, obviously, was a great help. I mean, we could have got it done, but it might have taken me eighteen months to get it all done. Diane, you all know Diane, so I can't say enough, but I appreciate you being willing to let me bring her back in and then the work that she has done and has continued to do. She is, has incredible character, and I greatly appreciate that about her. But anyway, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Awesome.
And I'd like to express my appreciation to everybody involved in the audit, the finance department, payroll, federal programs. Everybody had a part to play, and everybody got it done. And with that, six C is also Mr. Gibbs.
Do we need action on B?
I'd move for approval of the audit.
Second. Call roll.
Me, Mary.
Carla Clodfelter?
Here.
Having my word?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Miss Jester?
Okay, I'm not sure how much you want to know about six C. You're good, aren't you? These are the summer budgets for the programs that we need.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What about the Title I extended school year? Is that just Adams, or is there more?
It's housed at Adams, and that is operated by federal programs. Teresa, would you want to address that?
Just Adams, okay. Are we looking forward to any others coming a little later, or no?
Not for this is clear.
All right.
So if I have to make those determinations on the year, maybe use the one plan.
Thank you.
And that is based on the budget that is allotted for each site based on their Title I funding, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? I will tell you that the summer maintenance crew currently is at what I felt was a minimum where we needed to be. And once we hire an individual to be the director of operations, that number may change. We may address that moving forward depending on the need. But I didn't want to over-budget that either. So that's where we stand today.
Okay.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Clodfelter?
Thank you. Item six D are two policy changes, and Jean Hastings will present those to you.
Good evening, President Clodfelter and board. We have two policies. One is CFDA, the asset capitalization and depreciation. One thing that was missing from the previous policy was the guideline book, guidebook that went with that, so we added that. Changes were made to bring the book up to date based on new laws that have just recently went into effect. Carla Clodfelter and Mr. Gibbs has been great in getting that information, and I'd like to present that policy. And then our school nurses had, had went over, and it just so happens to be so timely right now with what our nation is facing in policy FFA, the health for students, the procedures for communicable disease. So if you have any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Clodfelter?
Carla.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes. I don't think she knows she waited this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've had a lot of medicine to give you. Just so I can be here.
Thank you. Agenda item seven is a report of the superintendent, and the announcements I have are that Friday will be a professional development day. We will not have students, followed by spring break the following week. I would like to make you aware of an event Thursday in the Lawton High School cafeteria, and that's the SEDEXO showcasing student abilities in culinary arts.
And when is that?
It's the Future Chefs. That is, two o'clock, students arrive, three o'clock, kitchen prep begins, four o'clock, judging starts, that's Thursday, four o'clock, Lawton High Cafeteria, Future Chefs. And those are the only announcements I have. And with that, we move to agenda item eight, which is the consent agenda.
Does anybody need anything removed from the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Clodfelter?
Okay, so with that, do we have a need for an executive session?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay.
Move for executive session.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Clodfelter?
Yes.
Should the return to open session?
I make the motion we return to open session.
Okay, call, call roll.
Kent Jester made the motion, who was the second?
Me, Bradley.
Me. Ms. Bradley.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
All right, the statement of executive session. The Board of Education went into executive session at 5:40 PM. Quit laughing. Members present included Carla Claude Felter, President, Patty Nyworth, Vice President, Kelly Edwards, Mary Bradley, and Kent Jester. Others present included Dr. Tom Thomas, Interim Superintendent, Dr. Ken Baden, Interim Chief Operating Officer, Chuck Wade, LPS School Attorney, and Brenda Hatch, who left at 5:53 PM. Items discussed included the employing, promoting, or receiving resignation of individual and certified in support salary personnel as listed on the certified in support personnel reports, elementary principals, Director of Operations, Director of Staff Development, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Chief Financial Officer, the purchase of appraisal of real property. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other items, and no action was taken. The board returned to open session at 6:20 PM, and this constitutes the minutes of the executive session.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Personnel Report. We would ask your approval of 13A, the certified and support personnel reports as you have received them.
Move for approval.
Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
13B, Approval Employment of Elementary Principals. This would be for fiscal '21, and we would ask your approval of Shelby Carpenter and Haley Crowe, both Assistant Principals now, to be promoted to Principal for fiscal '21.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
13C, Approval of Employment of a Director of Operations. This would be for fiscal '20, and we would recommend Jack Hanna for that position.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes, and hooray.
13D, Approval Employment of a Director of Staff Development. This would be for '21, and it would be Stephanie Heim. And we would issue a small contract in June for fiscal '20 if she's available to start before the start of the fiscal year.
Move for approval. Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
In consultation with Mr. Heim, we would recommend Jason James as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. This would be for fiscal '21 with a short contract in fiscal '20 if he can start in June.
Move for approval. Second.
Call roll.
I'm sorry, who made the second? Patty. Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
Also in Mr. Heim's administrative cabinet, we would ask for your approval of Rick Owens as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for fiscal '21.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes, and hooray again.
Yeah.
And 13G, Approval of Employment of a Chief Financial Officer. We would request your approval for Mr. Lance Gibbs to serve as the Chief Financial Officer for fiscal '21.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes, and hooray again.
Yeah, I did that with Kevin.
And 13H, we don't need any action on real estate at this time. 14, we have no new business that I'm aware of. Agenda item 15, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is Thursday, April 16th, 5 o'clock in this room. And we have no other new board meeting dates, and we're down to board announcements.
Do we have any board announcements?
Have a safe spring break.
And we're going to miss Kent, and I think Kent has something he wants to say.
Well, for the final time, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.